Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, we will start with the closed session report out from 8:16.
Closed session from August 16th, 2022. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance versus Eastern San Joaquin Grandwater Sub Basin Subsustainability Plan at all, Stanislaw County Superior Court case number CV20001720. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator Marcus Munoz, re potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 042015032, negotiating party Jim Harryford. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item five, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Craig Pedro and Marcus Munoz regarding the following employee organizations, service employees international union SEIU, local 1021, sheriff's management unit SMU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association CCPSEA, deputy sheriffs association DSA, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, unrepresented employees, board action, no reportable action taken. Closed session for today, August 23rd. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Barr versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court case number Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, claim number 2021-09GAL. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator Marcus Munoz, re potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 042015032, negotiating party Jim Harryford. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator Marcus Munoz, re potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 042003009, negotiating party Kennedy Chan. Item five, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Craig Pedro, Marcus Munoz, and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations, service employees international union SEIU, local 1021, sheriff's management unit SMU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association CCPSEA, deputy sheriffs association DSA, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, and unrepresented employees.
Thank you. And at this time, is there any public for the closed session? And I'll start with you.
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Is there any in the room on closed session? See you in nine, we will convene in the closed session and come back at nine o'clock for the regular agenda. Thank you. Okay. Good morning and welcome back to the regular Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. If you could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. No straws.
Earlier this morning, we were in closed session and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the board clerk to report out.
Closed session for today, August 23rd. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Barr versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 18CV42976. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, claim number 2021-09GAL. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator Marcus Munoz, re potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 042015032, negotiating party Jim Harryford. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator Marcus Munoz, re potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 042003009, negotiating party Kennedy Chan. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item five, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Craig Pedro, Marcus Munoz, and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations, service employees international union SEIU, local 1021, sheriff's management unit SMU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association CCPSEA, deputy sheriffs association DSA, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, unrepresented employees, board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Next, we have staff announcements. Are there any staff announcements? Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Pollendorf, board members. I just want to bring to everyone's attention with the hot weather that we're having, our boat and waterways personnel are out on all of our lakes. Our lakes are getting really super low. We're having some people running into sandbars and the edges of the lakes because everything is starting to pop up in the middle. I just want the public to be aware of that and be very cautious when they're out. I know I talked to Sam Berry Towing and they've been pulling a lot of people out of Maloney's because they're actually backing their trailers down off the ramp and it just drops off. So people are getting their trailers hung up and causing a lot of damage. So because of our lakes being really low, I just want people to be aware. We had that drowning earlier this year. I want to make sure that everybody's wearing their life jackets and just be very aware of water safety and with the heat, make sure everybody stays hydrated. That includes you, Gary, when you're not working.
Thanks, Gary.
All right, you guys have a good day.
I believe we have Lisa Medina.
Good morning, Madam Chair and respective board members. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Today, I just have one announcement. It's regarding our next free rabies vaccine clinic. It's a drive-through clinic that's going to be held on Saturday, September 10th, from nine to noon and with attending veterinarian Sasha Greenley, DBM. This is going to be a great event. It's always successful and that success is brought on always by our focus members and our annual service staff. If you miss this next free clinic, I do want to mention and reiterate that this is a rabies-only clinic. Our next free clinic, which includes rabies vaccine and microchip, will be held on Saturday, October 8th, from nine to noon here at the Calaveras County Government Center. And the attending veterinarian at that event will be Kathy Gatlin, DBM. Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other staff announcements online?
There are no online staff announcements.
Okay. And I'm going to go back to the room. Are there any other staff announcements in the room? See you in nine. I'll bring it back to the board. Next is general public comment. This is for any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If the public comment is concluded before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not concluded during the allotted time period, it will continue as the last item of business in order to provide opportunity for the remainder of the comment to be heard. So at this time, is there any public comment for any item not on the agendas?
Yeah, I have.
Please be mindful, anyone with public comment, there is a green light, yellow light, and red light. You have three minutes for a public comment.
Right now, I ain't got no water at my house. I live up on Old Miner's Way. I'm surrounded by 200,000 permitted plants. And I have a mental health issue over it because I had 5% of that and you guys had machine guns brought to my house. Now I have to stay out of every day and I want to know what you guys are going to do for me and I want to know why my road is not paved. Because they shouldn't even have a permit if the road isn't paved. And it's an emergency now because I got three kids that go two days without water. And they got them in school every day and we're surrounded by millionaires. And I want to know what you guys are going to do for me, my mental health and my kids when we don't have waters, when you guys sent $100 million in clowns so they can go up there and drill 800-foot wells when we're sitting around with 300-foot wells and I don't got the government's money to go up there and drill well. So what are you guys going to do for people like me that have to look at it every day? We don't leave in the valley. You guys don't got to look at it. I got to look at it every day. So what are you going to do for me? I don't get to grow. Matter of fact, if I put seven plants in my yard, my kid will have to choose what color he is in jail if I fail him. So now these guys are growing thousands all around me. I want to know what you're going to do for me and what everybody else that's seeing this and my mental health, what are you going to do? You guys going to go up there and make it fix? I'm going to have them down. I want to have them down. I don't want to see. I don't want to see. You guys destroyed my house. You busted out windows in my cars and in my house over way less. So what are you guys going to do for me? I'm going to work every day at Amazon, bust my car up on that road every single day. Every single day. I got a $2,400 engine built. I'm running a C9 guy because I blow an oil tank every week doing the work. And I don't get to have water tanks because you guys cry about me bringing water up with trucks. So what are you going to do? Not many of you got an answer? Not many of you got an answer? That's what I thought. Pick colors out of clay.
Do we have any other public comment for in the room? And just again, be mindful of the light, a three minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is my perspective on the animal shelter for cats here at Calaveras County. My name is Ann Dash and I am a volunteer at the shelter helping to take care of the cats. I've been doing this for a little over three years because I believe in a no-kill policy at shelters, which means people have to step up for the animals. I still consider myself a newbie but have been aware of shelter concerns going back for decades. My experience gives me first-hand concerns about the facility and the lack of adequate staffing. I am speaking up because the animal shelter has to depend so heavily on volunteer support, even for basic care and socialization of the animals. My fear is that the generosity of volunteers has enabled the county to neglect their legal responsibility to provide a safe and sanitary facility for animals. My regular tasks include housekeeping, which is food, water, litter, bedding, cleaning floors and walls, laundry, washing dishes and litter pans, in addition to playing with and brushing the cats. This can easily take two volunteers, two to four hours to complete, depending on the cat population. Meanwhile, staff is seen to medications, aggressive animals, feral cats, intakes, adoptions, and other duties volunteers are not allowed or qualified to do. And of note, on many days, there is only one volunteer and they can only spend one to two hours helping. The rest is left to staff. So actually, the cats get minimal care and attention on those days. On the good side, our shelter has a dedicated and caring staff doing as much as they can for animals, given the time and resources allotted. They have always been kind and supportive in helping me learn my job. Secondly, there are different housing options for cats, not like for the dogs. We have communal rooms and condos to meet the needs and personalities of the different animals. Next, there are a number of condos available to handle the fluctuation in cat population. And the fourth thing that's good for us is that we have separate spaces for feral cats, cats in quarantine, pregnant females, and new mamas with litters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Vicky Whipley and I'm reading for Ann. This is on the not-so-good side for the kitties. The buildings are prefab, modular structures showing wear and tear from active cats, clawed walls, moldings torn off. Parts of the buildings are difficult, if not impossible, to sanitize. Urine and feces in the ceiling when a cat gets up through the ceiling tiles, cat spray on the walls. Even with two buildings, there is inadequate space. Some of the communal rooms are quite small. There is not enough room for neat, efficient storage of bedding, dishes, toys, food, litter, cleaning supplies. There is inadequate time and staff to take care of regular, heavy cleaning, mopping floors, washing windows. The public house has functional but unsightly stop-gap measures, wire, plywood over the communal rooms, plastic fencing over the ceiling tiles, excuse me, to keep the cats separated. It can be cramped for potential adopters to meet the cats. It can be smelly if the housekeeping chores are not done. There are not enough windows. Some cats never see daylight. One back communal room doesn't ever have good light. Adopters frequently have long wait to take their cat home because it is difficult to get the spay and neuter appointments needed. So what is the county administration doing to improve the shelter facility and staffing? If nothing is in progress, why not? And as that last gentleman said, what are you going to do for us? Anna.
Is there any other public comment? No? Okay. See you in nine. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda.
Thank you.
Wait a second. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from consent for later discussion. Is there any board member that wishes to pull an item off consent? See you in nine. Is there any public comment on consent?
There is no online public comment.
With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
I'll move aside and adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
All right.
Aye. They all go to the room, exit. We could have pulled something for you, Rick. Hey, I never know.
Moving on to the regular agenda. At this time, we're on regular agenda item 18. I will turn it over to the clerk to read out.
Item 18, informational item, OES. Receive a tree mortality program implementation update from TSS Consultants.
Good morning, Madam Chair, honorable board members. John Osborne, your Director of Emergency Services. With me is our project manager, Tad Mason, from TSS Consultants. Everyone should be looking at program summary. Can we see that?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Mason. Good morning.
Excellent. Yes, good morning, Chair and board members. Tad Mason, for TSS. This is our quarterly update and since December of 2017, we completed 43 projects, removing about 12,000 trees. Of course, our focus is all county roads bordering private or publicly managed lands, focused on the area outside of the Butte Fire, of course. This summer, we conducted surveys and completed a number of projects. I'll be going through a slide deck here in a minute. Currently, we are surveying trees on national forest lands along county roads and I'll address that here at a later slide. John, you going to slide two?
Yep, I'm working on it. I've got... Let's carry this one more time. There we go.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. So we are seeing elevated tree mortality. These are examples of beetle kills, western pine beetle, primarily, some fur engraver. You can see we're still not out of the woods yet. No pun intended, but we still have quite a bit of tree mortality out there. Next slide. So we'll be certainly cycling through a number of slides here focused on recently completed projects. Our projects are scaled both small scale, say, less than 80 trees, up to almost over 500 trees. The idea here is to attract large contractors, hopefully local, and larger contractors when needed. So this is an example of a smaller project, 69 trees, a little bit scattered. You can see the maps here. This is Project 37, which was completed in May. Next slide. 38, Project 38, also scattered, looking at 61 trees completed recently and reimbursement request has been submitted to Calaveras and we received, the counties have received payment. Next slide. 39A, this is one of our bigger projects up in Big Trees Village. You can see that the efficiency is a little bit more realized here because of the close proximity of the project and the trees locations. This particular project was done by proper printing based out of Murphy's. Next slide. Next slide. 39B, larger project, also close-in. You can see the efficiencies, 567 trees realized at a cost of about $176. This project was also submitted to Calaveras. This was completed by Joe's Log in, a small contractor out of Bass Lake. Next. 39C, this is a scattered project along Highway 4 corridor. It was completed in April and a little bit more cost per tree, again, because of the scattered nature of the project. Reimbursement from Calaveras has been received. Next. Okay, Project 40. We just completed this, this particular project, 145 trees total scattered around the West Point and Willseyville area on both BLM and private lands, total of almost 200 trees. And one of the challenges we have with this particular project is unfortunately, the ampine facility there at Maritell suffered a catastrophic fire in late July. That really impacted the market for logs locally, the co-log market, which limited our contractors' ability to market logs. On top of that, unfortunately, there's been some supply chain issues and the contractor that was removing logs using self-loading log trucks also had an issue as far as staying in service due to some parts. However, all the logs have been removed as of yesterday and this project is a wrap. This was completed by Ace Tree Services out of Sonora. Our current project, I mentioned earlier, is Project 41 that we're doing on Forest Service land. We've got over 200 trees marked right now and that's going pretty well. As far as this slide goes, this is just a discussion as to why the delta in the per tree cost over time. Also, bullet number two, I'd like to call that out. We're seeing some significant additional tree mortality, especially in the ponderous pine and the true fir. Much of it is coming from western bark beetle populations. The latest hatch has been pretty significant. Also, we're starting to see fur engraver attacks, which typically started at the top of the tree and went down. This has caused some additional tree mortality, forcing us to ramp up the number of trees removed per project on an add-on tree basis. Next slide. Every quarter, as we refer out to the board, we include the summary sheet of the financials here. This is year-to-date after Project 39C and this summarizes cost per tree. You can see where we're at, $516 per tree. However, when you consider what the county expenditure has been, $136,302, you divide that number by the number of trees removed, the county outweigh is less than $12 per tree. The rest of the cost is being picked up with the BLM grant as well as, of course, primarily the state OES continuing to contribute 75% of the cost. Next slide. Lately, we've been working closely with the director of County OES on putting here a Good Neighbor Authority agreement with the Stanislaus National Forest. It's going quite well. The target here, of course, is in phase one, to secure funding for tree mortality removal. However, phase two, and this is important, would be ramping up this effort because of the GNA to install fuel rigs along county roads. This, of course, will require pretty significant funding. However, with the recently passed infrastructure law of last November, that's the bipartisan infrastructure law, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act signed last week, we're anticipating pretty significant funding coming down to support fuels treatment, not just on federal lands, but also on private lands. So we're pushing hard to get this GNA agreement in place so hopefully we can work with the Stanislaus to attract those dollars for projects within the county. So far, the Stanislaus has committed a little over $107,000 in matching funds. However, we need to codify this with the GNA agreement in place. So that GNA agreement draft has been reviewed by county council and was submitted to the Stanislaus National Forest in early June. Since then, we understand that it's being reviewed at the regional office level of the Forest Service, Region 5, of course, and that would be the grand... the Forest Service, Region 5, of course, and that would be the grants and agreements staff. And I guess that's taken some time, but we're hopeful to hear back here in the next few weeks. With that, I will pause for questions.
Thank you, Tad. And just a couple of notes about the Good Neighbor Agreement. To our knowledge, this is the second Good Neighbor Agreement across the state. The first was with Humboldt County and the Six Rivers National Forest. We patterned our agreement after that, following their success. And basically, we're waiting for the machine wheels to turn at grants and agreements, not only to approve the overall grants agreement, but our first special projects agreement or supplemental project agreement, often referred to as a SPA. And that SPA is to remove hazardous trees along county roads within the forest itself. And that project, not only will it make our roads safer, but it will enhance the ability for our first responders to have a venerable place to make a stand should there be a fire. There's about nine miles of these roads that we're targeting up in the forest. So, we're hoping to hear back soon about the Good Neighbor Agreement and being able to move forward with this project. It is ready to move forward. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Tad. At this time, I'll move it to the Board. Do you actually have some questions?
Tad, this is Jack coming in. Thank you very much, John and Tad, for the presentation. It's been seven years since the Butte Fire. There's trees, I'm sure, that are now dying because of drought or bark beetle that are not related to the fire. That said, there are still some trees standing from the fires, we're all aware. But I was wondering whether there's any plans to do a survey in the scar zone to see if there are any trees that may qualify or be a threat to the county roads.
So, Tad, I'll field that. So, as the Board is well aware, we still have Project 76 of the Butte Fire Presidential Disaster Declaration. We've been waiting for multiple months as a time extension is, has been appealed and is at Region 9 FEMA. There has been a substantial backlog with FEMA, and frankly, the outlook isn't really positive. I know that Robert Fenton, who is the Region 9 Administrator, has been tapped for the monkeypox response on a national level. So, I'm not sure how that's going to impact our timelines. One of the things that we can certainly do to entertain that is there's about 1,545 trees left in that project. It's been multiple years since anyone's really looked at those trees. So, maybe our best course of action at this point would be to look at that project and see if it's still viable. If it isn't, maybe we move forward with closing out. That's the only remaining project workbook open for the Butte Fire, and actually for any of our open presidential disasters. Maybe we look at just closing the books on that, and that kind of paves the way for us to begin looking at the burn scar area and evaluating trees. It gets kind of tenuous in the sense that we would need to make sure that we can prove that these trees were killed by drought and bark beetle rather than the fire. Some interesting things to note along those lines is we're really entering our third year of a new drought. I'm not sure we ever got out of the old drought, and that's causing some of the resurgence that we're seeing. We're also seeing some unusual behavior in that some of the lower elevation trees, specifically oak trees, have been attacked. And those are, we've covered the low-lying areas, what we call west of Highway 49, I think twice now, Tad. We've gone through there and examined those, and we're making sure that those trees are addressed as well.
Thank you.
Marita? On Project 40, there's an increase in budget pending. Who approves that? Is that OES or FEMA? I mean, it just happened to be that was the only one.
Primarily, that has to do with our contract with the vendor. We set the add-on trees at a percentage for the project. I think we usually use about 40%. What we saw here on Project 40 was a much higher percentage of add-on trees, and so we're working through the motions with us, County Council, and the Admin Office to see if we can adjust that figure to 50%.
So, that could also hold true for other projects because you're seeing an increase in trees that need to be taken down?
So, what happens is we go in and we survey the projects and determine the number of targeted trees, and then the add-ons is a percentage of that. So, it just kind of depends on the timeframe between the survey and the execution of the trees. One of the variables in that is whether or not we get a returned right-of-entry form from the property owner. And unfortunately, what happens a lot of times is the property owners neglect to return that in a timely manner, so they're not included in the base of the contract. And once they see the tree crews out working in the project, they go, hey, I have some trees. And then that shifts from the base side to the add-on side.
Okay. On the fur, the engraver, why are the whole trees now being impacted versus just the tops?
Excellent question. We attribute that to the drought stress that the standing trees are now experiencing. They're less able to fend off insects like the fur engraver, and so it just descends the tree from the top and kills the entire tree.
And I have one more on fuel breaks with U.S. Forest Service. The fuel breaks I'm familiar with, like in the Ebbets Pass area, they're off the roads. They're way further back from the roadways. So, are these fuel breaks going to be just widening where the existing trees are and brush along the Forest Service and the county road?
So, what we do with the tree mortality program is, and maybe what I can show kind of as an example. So, if we were going to address the picture on the right here, we would come in and we would cut these trees, these dead and dying trees down, the ones that are brown here. And what you'll notice is all of this fuel that is on the ground here, and you see the continuous ladder from the ground up to the crowns of these trees. We don't normally remove this fuel or rearrange it either through mulching or anything else. We're just simply cutting down the trees and cleaning up after ourselves, removing that particular tree and the slash that's associated with it. In our discussions with the Forest Service, what we're talking about doing is managing this fuel, these ladder fuels here, by either removal or rearrangement through mastication to break this ladder down so that if we do have a fire here, it stays on the ground, doesn't climb up these ladder fuels and get up into the crowns and make a run. Does that cover what we're...
So, does that mean, Mr. Osborne, that you would be also taking down healthy trees that are in the fuel break zone?
No. Healthy trees are a good thing. So, what it means is that we would be addressing this underbrush and the fuel loading in the lower section of the ladder fuels. Tad, anything to add there?
Yes, these are all excellent questions. We'll say that we are targeting 200 feet each side of the road for this shaded fuel break approach. Of course, with the agency, U.S. Forest Service, having jurisdiction, we'd be working closely with them on a treatment prescription that meets their goals as well as meeting county goals. Of course, what's key about treating along county roads is safe egress and ingress so that county residents can leave and hopefully fire suppression crews can access these parcels and this acreage. So, that's the business model we have in mind here. It's been replicated in other locations. We know it works pretty well. And the great news is the Stanislaus National Forest is absolutely at the table and working closely with us.
And Madam Supervisor, let me be a little bit more clear about not removing trees, or healthy trees. What you see here in this is a lot of trees very close together, and so they're, depending on the prescription devised in cooperation with the Forest Service, some of these trees may be removed because they're too close together. Their spacing is such that while they may be healthy now, they're going to compete with each other to survive. And obviously, when you're competing, one's going to win over another, and that may cause more mortality within the forest itself. So, there may be some thinning of these trees, but the idea of a shaded fuel break is that we create a space that is defendable and that could be pretreated with retardant, and that would afford the fire crews the opportunity to make a stand in this place versus, based on what you see here with the fuel loading between the dead trees and the ladder fuels, it's really unsafe for the crews to try and make a stop here. Is that clear?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other Board members that have questions? I have a question, John. Going back to, piggybacking off of Marita, but more in the burn scar area of the Butte Fire, with the funding that was mentioned, that's coming out of the infrastructure bill, could that be utilized for re-establishing the fire break that was created during the Butte Fire? Or would it have to be new fuel break?
So, with the 187,500 that's dedicated that the Forest Service has committed to is for tree mortality, and that's specifically up on the forest itself. So, the short answer is no.
That wasn't my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My question was the money that is coming out of the infrastructure bill, not this one, not through the GNA, specifically from the infrastructure bill, that's coming down the pipe, and then the one that was passed last week, which Tad mentioned, can that be utilized for the old Butte Fire fuel break? Or is it only catered to new fuel breaks? Like maintaining, going back and maintaining that already existing fuel break?
I see your question. Thank you for the clarification. So, one of the things that the Good Neighbor Agreement will allow us to do is to partner with outside agencies. We've had conversations with the CalAM team regarding the McKay's fuel break, which was originally put in in the 90s, was used as part of the tactical operations for the Butte Fire, and really hasn't been touched since. And I'm aware that CalAM is seeking funds to work on that. Those funds could be used to enhance the fuel breaks that we have, from my understanding, and to create new ones as well. So, that hasn't quite made it down to our level yet, as it was just signed, some of it was just signed last week. But it's our hope that through the Good Neighbor Agreement, we'll be able to conduct those projects and actually get some maintenance done on the fuel breaks that were used during the Butte. One of the, if there was an upside to the electrifier, is that some of those fuel breaks that existed from the Butte, because of the electra, went back and used as contingency lines and cleaned up. And so, some of that maintenance, because of the electra, got performed again from CalFire and the dozers that were working the electrifier. And then, Tad, I'll give you a shot to add anything to that?
Yes. The bipartisan infrastructure law that was signed by the President last November has significant funding for both treatment of fuels on federal and private lands. We've been pressing the Washington Office and the Forest Service for direction as to how that will be implemented, and we haven't received any feedback as yet. The same with the Inflation Reduction Act. It appears there was some funding allocated, but we just don't have any feedback yet as to how that will be dispersed to support fuels treatment on federal lands as well as private lands. So, to be continued, I guess. I hope to report back next quarter on how that funding really is coming in.
Thank you. Any other Board members have questions? Nope, okay. I'm moving out to public comment. Is there any online public comment?
There's no online public comment.
Is there any comment in the room? See, none. We'll bring it back to the Board. Thank you, John and Tad, for the presentation. It was very informative.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to our regular agenda, Item 19. And at this time, we will have the clerk read out, and then is staff coming to the table? Okay.
Item 19, information item, Economic and Community Development, receive an update on the Calaveras County Permanent Local Housing Allocation PLHA Fund Program.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Board. Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director, here in partnership with our Health and Human Services Agency and our housing partnership. I have Cory Allen, who just stepped out for a second, who will be back in just a second, and Lee Kimball, that will be providing you with the presentation. I'm just here as a support role.
Have a PowerPoint presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mr. Pedro. Cory Allen, your Health and Human Services Agency Director. With me today...
Is he used to work for you?
Yes, ma'am. Just look at him. Totally calm and cool. It's good. It feels very good. So, yes, is our...
Behind closed doors.
Is our PowerPoint ready to go? Yes. Oh, I see it now. Thank you. With me today is Lee Kimball, your Housing Programs Manager. We wanted to return today...
We'll have the screen shared.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So, what we are doing today is returning to your Board at your request to update you on the permanent local housing allocation grant. You will recall, we brought this funding opportunity to you in November and December 2021, and we tried to fine-tune and focus on the priorities of this Board. Since that time, we've been busy collaborating with our community and governmental partners to develop a meaningful and impactful... to develop a meaningful and impactful program that's in line with your vision and priorities. The purpose of the PLH grant, AA grant, is to provide an ongoing permanent source of funding to all local governments. And this is to increase the stock and the occupancy of affordable housing through five-year plans. These funds are non-competitive and rolled over within the five-year window, so those funds received in 2019 and 2020 will be combined from the 539,000 available now up to an anticipated $1.2 million. Can you hit the L's for me? After considering 10 allowable activities, weighing community and your board's input during those November and December meetings in 2021, we selected and presented to you two key areas that would meet our local needs, and that includes down payment assistance and home accessibility modifications. Now, these are both grant programs and serve to strengthen our workforce housing needs and increase capacity and self-sufficiency of those disabled residents in our community by making household modifications. So the first program is our down payment assistance. The down payment grant provides funding to families who meet income criteria where the family will pay a share of the down payment cost, with a grant capped at $30,000 per household. So in this situation, the client will pay a share, and our goal is to serve 20 households over the grant period. This objective is in sync with our housing elements, number H2A, pursuing federal and state funding that helps Calaveras County meet low to moderate income households. And you might recall, that's our workforce housing strategy, and H3F, to pursue public and private partnerships to better meet the housing needs of low-income households. So this program will allow local residents who are eligible to be more competitive in their local housing market by increasing their buying power. To be eligible, per the Housing and Urban Development rules, households may not exceed 120% of the area median income. And as an example, for a family of four, this means they may earn up to $108,000 per year and still be eligible. So the process is straightforward. They will simply call our office. The information will be provided at the end of this presentation. To schedule an application appointment, there will be standard documentation. The forms have been provided to you in your packet, so everything has been built from the inside out. They will simply submit those documents, and the grant will be sent to the escrow company As you can see on the list, very standard documentation, and there will be a copy of a completed uniform residential loan at the end. Required copies after the home offer, things like your title, your verification of homeowner's insurance. And what I want to draw your attention to next is that there will be a deed restriction in order to maintain within the affordable housing dollar amount. So what I'll do is explain that here in just a minute. Thank you. As with many grants, there are restrictions to ensure home affordability over time. These deed restrictions will ensure that the home is only sold or rented at an affordable rate and after the five-year window. Correct? Thank you. The property owner must use this home as their primary residence and retain ownership of it and not refinance during the five-year window. To apply for this program, a person will call our housing specialist at 209-754-6325. The second of our programs is the Home Accessibility Modification Grant Program. Now, this is aimed to positively impact the disproportionately high number of disabled and aging residents here in Calaveras County when compared to the state. These modifications improve a household's ability to remain in the home with stability and improves equity in our community. Grants for home modification, we can do things like constructing grab bars, wheelchair ramps, and so forth. There's no cost to the homeowner, and we can, when needed, advance payments directly to the contractor to make sure that needed supplies can be purchased. Our goal is to serve 24 households within the five-year grant. This goal also is in line with the housing element goals. In this instance, H5A, to apply annually for housing rehabilitation funding for low-income households, and H3G, to provide housing assistance to persons with disabilities. The eligibility for this second program is slightly different in that their income may not exceed 80% of the area median income. So as an apples-to-apples comparison, a household of four can earn up to $72,000. They will have proof of disability and have proof of homeownership. This aims to serve the lower-income demographic, and the process is the same, scheduling an application appointment, obtaining written bids from licensed contractors, securing the necessary permits, and the documentation is standard as well. Program application, they'll have a proof of income, a proof of homeownership, and a proof of their disability. So with that, we can skip right through. We'll be getting your basic bids, following up with an invoice. And that, in a nutshell, is the program. But I want you, for Lee Kimball, to just outline briefly our implementation.
Can we ask questions on that part? Or do you want to wait till the end, we ask questions?
Let's wait till the end.
Okay.
So the first part, now that we've done the research and looked at other communities and how they put their programs together, we have our forms is to go for outreach. And these are just some of the ideas that we will be putting the word out there so we can get to target audiences that we're hoping to, will take advantage of these two I thought you might be interested because you had directed us to go and look at what other communities are doing, to take a look at those communities that we took best practices from. We actually looked into more than these communities, but we pieced it together and then made it fit Calaveras County from these communities. So this is the number to call for folks who are watching who might be interested in these programs.
And that concludes our presentation. So if any questions were available to you. Gary.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Going back to your objective is to serve 20 households with down payment assistance grants. Have you assisted any at this point?
We haven't launched because we were directed to come back and show you what we were going to do after we looked into other ways that communities are providing these services.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, it says for five years, it gave on the deed restrictions for five years. Property owner is the only use of the home, is primary resident, the property is not sold, property owner does not change title, and the mortgage is not refinanced. So what happens if they get into the home and two years after they're into it, they lose their job, they don't have any income, they can't make the mortgage payments, and they walk away from it? They just, what happens at that point?
My best guess, if somebody was foreclosed on, we would lose that, that funding would be lost. If they sell, the money comes back to this same account, and then we send it to another homeowner.
Well, it says they can't sell.
If they sell, they have to repay. That's in the-
That's in the agreement that they signed. Okay, so I want to be clear on that.
So it doesn't cover foreclosure.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Jack.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for your presentation today. When we discussed this back in October, as you recall, I did have questions about down payment assistance, primarily because there are multiple programs throughout the state of California that do the exact same thing. So at that time, I asked what other things we would have considered as we came to this conclusion in your recommendation. So what other things were on the menu that we decided not to pursue? What did we consider?
There are 10 options that are allowable activities. Just about half of them, I don't have the list in front of me, but just about half of them are not things that we could do in Calaveras. As you will recall, our first recommendation was to do a loan program for developers, and we were directed to come back. So we were down to three, and these were two of the top, the two top of the three because they hit the housing element directions.
What was the third?
I don't remember. I'd have to go back and look. There's 10, so I didn't prepare for that, sorry.
Thank you. You know, we, I think we're still planning on having a study session on housing down the road, so a lot of these can come up later, but I'll permit. So as, you know, as I talk to developers, and I ask why they don't do more multifamily units, the one commentality that I'm hearing is really because of, obviously, we have income challenges and other things that people can pay, but it keeps coming down consistently to utility hookups, water and sewer. And our local utilities, they have their costs, too. So it may not be something that they can negotiate on. Have we considered incentivizing multi-unit residential by, instead of paying, loaning developers, rather subsidizing the utility hookups?
That is a conversation. And we've launched, launched a housing resource partnership, and it has two working committees. One is working with developers, service districts, building planning, and the other is nonprofits, the faith community, and Health and Human Service Departments that offer services. In the developers, that conversation is going on. This week, we are starting our process of creating a strategic plan, and I would guess that that will be one of the strategies that will be proposed over the next couple of days.
Thank you. Because I certainly, I mean, I appreciate getting 20 people into homes, I get that. But if we could use, and if I understand correctly, we have the opportunity to pivot if things change in the future. So if your committee comes back and says, wow, if we put a half million dollars towards this 20-unit apartment building, it would pencil out for the developer, and we could do two of them, so it'd get 40. So I assume that with this money, if the conversation evolved like that and the opportunity was there, we would pivot. Is that correct?
Yes, but this, this funding, that's not an allowable activity. But as you know, housing is very complicated, and there are a lot of different grant applications that we can submit for. And we've created a chart of all of those that are coming from state and federal sources. So if that is a strategy that the group as a whole wants to go towards, that we will note a target funding for that specific purpose.
Thank you. My final question is, what is going on with the Stanislaus Housing Authority? I do not see them executing on properties that they own in our county and putting the housing in place.
Thank you for that question, Supervisor Garrett. So Lee and I have met with the Deputy Director at the Stanislaus Housing Authority. We've had several phone calls. She's participated actively in our housing partnership meetings. She will be joining us for our study session, October 22nd, and she's bringing the team, so there should be multiple people there. They have changed hands, it sounds like some new leadership. The one thing that she did share with us is that they had no bidders, except for one on the property, to try and move that project along, but that the price point was so far exceeding the norm that they were unable to move forward with any action on that request for proposal. So, but they will be able to provide a full report, and that's why we've bumped to October when they were available to answer your questions.
That'd be great, because I hear different stories, and that wasn't what I hear.
Okay.
And so, you know, they could either lead or get out of the way.
Yes.
We need to move forward in this county. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm done. I hear Gary growling over there, so I assume he's got some comments.
No, I wasn't growling. I just thought this-
Make sure you ground to your mic.
I was under the impression we launched this program last October. It's another year now, and we still haven't launched it. So it's another year of an economy that was really moving pretty well over the course of that year, and now we're headed to who knows what, as you're hearing all kinds of predictions. So I'm not even sure if it's going to be viable, if we can find people to utilize this program going forward at this point. So that was, I was just, that was my comments.
No, thank you for that input. And we do have until 2024, and we'll continue to push the outreach on this. The behind-the-scenes work has been ongoing. We certainly wanted to return to your board at your guidance from that December 14th meeting.
And I'm not blaming you at all.
Thank you.
And thanks for your presentation. I'm not saying anything you do, I'm just, you know.
We want to see action.
And I know you do. You've been working on it all this time.
That was in my notes from December, was Supervisor Callaway. I'm done talking about it, I want to see some action. So that's what we have for you.
I'm not blaming you guys.
I hear you. Thank you. Supervisor Callaway?
Can the $30,000, which is not a whole lot for max for the down payment, piggyback with the Board of Realtors First Time Home Buyers Program or with Habitat?
Yes. So whatever they come up with, then we match to that, to $30,000, so that the numbers add up if we get the full anticipated amount to be able to reach the goals to help that many families.
So somebody could piggyback with the first-time home buyer to $30,000? Okay, got it.
Yes.
Why can't they refi? I mean, if the rates go down, why couldn't they refi?
You know, that's something I can look into. That's a good suggestion.
I thought so, too.
Yay.
And it's simply part of the rules of the grant, but we'll look and see where there's any wiggle room.
Also, on the, on the modifications, Area 12 has the program also, but it's geared more towards seniors, but not necessarily, because they work with Drail also. And I didn't know if that, I don't think it was 80% of median income to get that help, but I'm assuming there's a partnership here or no duplica, I'm sorry.
They really had a very small reimbursement, and so construction costs are so high that it hasn't been hugely successful. So we, that was one of the programs we investigated so that we would be able to move it forward a little faster.
It wasn't successful because it was hard to find contractors willing to do these modest modifications to a home. I mean, we were, we, I'm on the Board of Area 12, I'm a separate, we always had trouble finding contractors willing to do this, but, okay, that's all. Thank you very much, Ms. Kimball.
Supervisor, stop it.
Let's see, we have two different eligibility requirements that have median household income. I'm looking at them, and they're different for Calaveras County. So is one the median for disabled people, and one the median in household, how are they different?
So the program that would provide a grant for, to purchase a home, is targeting the workforce, and we can go up to 120%. So we went to the highest limit because we want to make sure that Calaveras residents have the best opportunity to access that funding. The home modification is targeting lower-income disabled, not necessarily senior, folks, so they can stay in their homes longer if a disability can-
You're able to close it down to the specific, that's why those incomes are different when it comes to the median?
Right.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, I, you know, you're restricted to what the grant can do. I'm kind of, you know, feeling what Gary's saying, or Supervisor Toffinelli, when it comes to the state of affairs. And, you know, $30,000 down, $108,000 for a median income for the down payment, you know, it just, it doesn't pencil out, you know? It's, we can get, I'm all for giving people the help to get them in, because those aren't affordable housing, and we aren't building it right now. We aren't building-
We aren't building affordable housing in Calaveras County, which is unfortunate. So, some, Mr. Gary Mendy brought up the very same thing I bring up during those meetings when we're in strategic planning, is our infrastructure is one of our major hurdles. And, you know, that's, that's where I'm going, is how, how can we help get to the point where we're able to close the gap and actually-
Build.
Built. And I understood the original idea that you came from last year, although, you know, rollover funds, when they're forgivable, aren't really rollover funds, you know? You know, you can't continually use them if you decide to forgive them. That said, one point two million dollars goes nowhere when it comes to infrastructure. We discussed this also. I mean, basically, we're, we're looking at numbers like four hundred dollars a foot when it comes to underground, and, and that's just for one of the pipes. You need one with water going in and one with water going out, so.
And I appreciate your insights. Obviously, you, you work in that field, and it's very near and dear to you and your awareness. Luckily, we have Gabriel Elliott on the line. He obviously leads more with our planning, if he had anything to add. But what we work on is the housing programming, and then we do that partnership, and, and I appreciate knowing Supervisor Stoppa, your participation on that housing partnership to see, bring those infrastructure strengths and the builders into those meetings is what it's going to take.
And I understand that. I just, you know, with the way this is put together, the cart's going before the horse, you know, at least in Calaveras County. Other counties are different, they have different opportunities, so they're able to implement this in a different manner. And like Lee brought up, our hands are constrained. Out of ten, there was a possible five, and then we narrow those down, you know, and then the board rejects one also, so.
I just want to remind you, too, this is an ongoing source. Every five years, we'll be given a new anticipated amount. With this new housing resource partnership, we'll have the right people at the table to look at all the opportunities, not just for this source of funding, but other sources, and we'll have our priorities and our strategy, so we'll be able to more laser-target how we're going to move forward, you know, looking at the needs that you're bringing up, that maybe this funding would not address, but there are other funding sources that might, so that we can start to get some traction there. I'm very excited that we're going to be having these conversations.
Any other board questions? I'm going to turn it over to public comment. I'm going to start online with Jim. Is there any public comment?
There's no online public comment.
I move it to the room. Is there any public comment in the room? Hi, Kathy.
Madam Chair, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director. I'm very, very excited about this program. We came very close to losing this opportunity, and we have built just an amazing partnership with all of our sister and brother agencies and departments. Gabriel Elliott from Planning, Doug Oliver from Building, Public Works. So this is a really neat, neat program, and I just want to be appreciative to those who really are doing the heavy lift, and I'm happy to be part of this group.
Thank you, Kathy. So you know other public comment? We'll bring it back to the board. Thank you both for being here. Presentation was great, very detailed, and appreciate, like Kathy said, the work that you guys are putting into this.
Lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Who had a couple stuck in, too?
Let's get it launched.
Yes. Do you want action? Next on the agenda is supervisory announcement, and I will start to my left with Supervisor Callaway.
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Gary Mendy?
Nothing to report. Report?
Vice Chair?
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Stoppa?
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
And I do have two things to report. One is to let the board know that the UC Extension has officially, now has on staff a Livestock Natural Resource Advisor that will be representing the multi-counties, which is, as you know, has been a long process of hiring. And then I met with the Calaveras Planning Coalition yesterday to talk to constituents in Copper about the Copper Community Plan. I did his, as I formally mentioned before, that it's been out on Facebook, so I decided to sit down with constituents just to see where, where they're at, and just reiterating that the board is still waiting for staff to come back to the board of supervisors to discuss what their next step should be for the Copper Community Plan. They're just continuing to have conversations with my constituents on that. Other than that, that's all I have. There is nothing else to report out. I guess we'll have a good day. See you in a couple weeks.